And we want you to feed back to us your questions and your and your refinements to those topics. Now, if a topic does not come up that you really feel is critically important, then we're going to ask you to do one of two things. One is that you can send it to us so that we can then fold it into our deliberations as we go forward. Because we want it to be at least somewhat formulated before we bring it to you. So that's, that's really our goal is to really go deeper and deeper on very specific topics. Okay, all right. So. There we go. Excuse me, the technician is not working very well and the technician is me, so forgive me as I work this out here. There is just some clutter that I need to get rid of. Okay. All right, there we go. So in order to get to these 12 topics, I want to make sure you fully understand the technical logistics that we'll be using tonight to accomplish this goal. First, our technical coordinator, Lisa DeRuevo, Lisa, raise your hand, will be the only person who can mute and unmute our microphones. Okay, secondly, to speak, you will need to raise your hand electronically, which will place you into a queue to speak. And when you're recognized, please offer your questions or your comments in one minute or so, so that we can give a response and get as many people in as possible. Now, your electronic hand, raising your electronic hand is going to be, if you look at the bottom or of your of your screen, there is a menu that says participants. And do you see it? Well, in that box, if you open it, you will see it says, raise your hand, lower your hand. So the moment that you do that, it will put you in a queue so that then Lisa will see you electronically and be able to raise your hand. If everyone can look and you see Chris Koenig over here on the upper left, he's raising his hand and that's what it looks like. Thanks, thanks, Chris. That's helpful. Appreciate it. Okay, so that's what we're, we're asking you to do. And clearly, no matter how hard we try, we probably won't get to everyone. We even, we've even extended our session for 30 minutes to get in as many people as possible. But if we don't get to you and you have a question or comment that you want to make, you can email it to me at, and we'll put this in the chat so you can see it. It's info@peacefulguardiansproject.org. Again, info@peacefulguardiansproject.org. And we will respond to let you know first of all that we received it. And secondly, we will respond and endeavor to answer your question. And we'll tell you, even if we can't answer your question, we will respond to you. And finally, our work is on subject very much, they're very much a work in progress. In other words, we're not, we're not presenting you a finished product tonight. So we probably won't have answers for all of your questions. But that's also exactly why we're doing it tonight. So that we can get your input, which will then strengthen the work that we're doing. So your input and your insights are quite important tonight. So here's how the process will go. Task force members will speak in groups of three. Then we will take questions and comments for 15 minutes before moving on to the next group of three. May I suggest that you write down your questions and comments while the members are speaking so that you don't forget them, number one. And secondly, if they don't get responded to, that you can then send them to us and we can answer them for you via email. Okay, so we begin tonight on the topic of alternatives to public response, to police response, alternatives to police response. And our task force members up first will be Raquel Derrick, David McNamara, and Beetle Bailey. And we'll start with Raquel, who will explain her topic.
Thanks, Lester. So the topic that I'm going to be speaking about is building a supportive and rehabilitative criminal justice system. And the problem that I'm trying to address is that there's currently components of a criminal justice system forged in the tough on crime era with antiquated punitive components that create a revolving door for individuals once they become involved in the system. To address this, I recommend establishing and implementing a multi-system approach to incorporate diversion into all intercept points of the criminal justice system. So Lester, can I share the sequential intercept map?
Sure, let's see if Lisa can give you that capability.
Well, that was what we, there, there was an email sent out yesterday that we were not going to have participants share tonight. It was one of, remember, Lester?
Okay, that's fine.
So we, so there was an email sent yesterday that was one of the security measures that was suggested.
Okay, so the sequential intercept model is, or map is a model of the criminal justice system broken down into six intercepts. So it looks at intercept zero, which are community-based services, intercept one, which is law enforcement, intercept two is initial, initial detention, initial court hearings, intercept three is jails and courts, intercept four is reentry, and intercept five is community corrections. So the idea would be to look at the map for Kingston and bring together the relevant stakeholders to really look at the existing system and services and identify where there are existing services or needs and gaps while promoting collaboration and communication. So some of the strategies that are focused on during a sequential intercept mapping exercise is creating a trauma-informed criminal justice agency and agents within an agency. So this might be identifying opportunities for having more trauma-informed responses to people intersecting with the criminal justice system, such as, you know, a popular one is crisis intervention team, which is a police intervention, or it might be a specialty court, such as the drug court, or a treatment model court, a veterans court. And this would allow the team working on it to establish diversion options that are widely available and effectively implemented. So if in Kingston, there is a crisis intervention team, it's an opportunity to look at how that team is functioning and how it could be improved to better meet the needs of all residents in Kingston who find themselves intersecting with law enforcement. So some of the obstacles to this type of work are that funding is always an issue, especially for community-based services, which are so critical to keeping people who don't belong in the criminal justice system out of the criminal justice system. Implementation can be a challenge to maximize resources and the program. So many great ideas fail because of flawed implementation. So really utilizing somebody who specializes in implementation to help implement to fidelity is a strategy for that. A coordinated response between agencies and system points can be an obstacle, especially when it comes to data systems and information sharing. They may not be up to what they would need to be to effectively share information across services. But the opportunities of this type of approach are inter-agency collaboration, resource pooling, and this could be fiscal resources, or it could be personnel or services. And more comprehensive and ongoing training can result from an initiative like this.
Okay, thank you, Raquel. Appreciate it. So next we'll hear from David McNamara. David?
Hi, so so I want to talk about alternatives to police engagement as far as mental health episodes and addiction-related issues. Okay, the large review, I'm, I'm going to describe a more target, you know, a more of a micro-targeted approach to one specific area. So the core problem is, as we've identified it, is that when a mental health episode, drug-induced or other psychotic break, drug overdose, or other drug-related issue occurs, generally, police are the only professionals called and sent to the site of the incident. Many individuals experiencing these episodes and psychotic breaks have been born with intellectual and developmental disabilities, IDBs, or, you know, may have experienced severe trauma as children or and or throughout their lives, as well as having other, you know, multiple, being neurodivergent and having other multiple mental health challenges. So it makes it difficult when law enforcement officers are the only ones called to the scene of one of these incidents. As, as you know, this has not been their specific training. And these types of episodes can often take many hours, many hours of care and therapy that law enforcement officers did not have available. So a recommended solution that we came up with in our group, and this is something that I've worked on, you know, individually for quite some time, is, is to create a mental health and addiction response team that would be part of the 911, 911 team that that's called. So basically, what would happen is in the case of, of a 911 call that was clearly a mental health episode or an addiction-related incident, this team would be called specifically to, to deal with this situation. So the team would consist of a social worker, a, and a certified recovery peer advocate, SERPA, and a law enforcement officer. And basically, the social worker and the peer would be the first, you would be the first line just, just to assess the situation and understand what's happening. The law enforcement officer would be there, of course, you know, in case it was necessary and, 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 you know, it was, there was violence. And there was something that, you know, that needed to be, to be done. So this, this, this type of group was put together in Eugene, Oregon about 30 years ago. And it's, it's, it was a group of peers and mental health professionals got together, retrofitted an old van, staffed it with mental health counselors and peers. And they were sent out to respond to 911 calls. The program is called Cahoots. And now it basically, in 2019, they, this, this group now responded to 24,000 calls, about 20% of the total dispatches, and only about 150 of those required police backup. And the director of the program said that this, this program saves the city about 8.5 million in public safety and costs and another 14 million in ambulance trips and ER costs. Because having, being able to have professionals assess the situation, quite often, you know, they may not need to go to the, to the ER. So it actually saves on a lot of different, a lot of different levels. I mean, Eugene, Oregon is a town of 172,000, so, you know, obviously, we're, we're far smaller. But that gave me a lot of hope because this has been successful for, for 30 years in a, in a town much larger than ours. Some of the obstacles that, that we identified again are, you know, can be funding, although there are a couple of grants that the, that the county has received recently that might be able, some funds might be able to be put towards this. And then, and then, you know, the, being able to work together as a team, you know, with, with law enforcement and really sit down and, and create this open collaboration, you know, can take some, some time and some work, so that, that could be an obstacle. You know, the organization that I founded called Samadi, we already worked very closely with the, with the Sheriff's Oracle Team, which is the opioid responses county law enforcement program. And, you know, we, we've been working on trying to put this team together for some time. So this is something I wanted to present this evening. Some opportunities that could accelerate the solution would bring, would be to bring in consultants to work with the county Department of Mental Health, peer-based agencies, and law enforcement officials. The Cahoots that I talked about earlier, we can actually hire consultants from that group to come in and set it up. They've done this in cities all across the US. So they are available to come in and, and, you know, advise us on how to set up a group like this. So. What I.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Lester.
Thank you. So now we'll, we'll hear from Beetle Bailey. Beetle?
Okay. My issue was crisis intervention training. So law enforcement currently is not adequately trained to manage incidents that feature aggression from neurodivergent people. Say someone who is autistic on the spectrum somewhere, people in mental distress, people dealing with addiction issues, or someone who has any combination of those issues. And they're not really equipped to deal with that with anything other than violent restraint. As can be seen in incidents in which interactions with members of these groups ends poorly or fatally. Law enforcement training has so far proved lacking or conditionally adequate at best when it comes to de-escalation and conflict management with vulnerable and at-risk groups. So a possible solution, ultimately, law enforcement will be phased out of response strategies and efforts that feature non-violent community issues and issues that are not extra-legal. Just as we don't send peer counselors and mental health professionals to address an armed robbery, so we shouldn't send armed soldiers to de-escalate a situation involving frightened, disoriented, compromised, or all of the above person. In these cases, the presence of law enforcement alone is enough to escalate an otherwise manageable and non-violent situation. So some obstacles and challenges. Before the changeover in response from armed peacekeepers to trained mental health professionals, peer counselors, before that initiated, it's urgent that officers be trained to recognize which situations are violent crimes or are likely to be without the intervention of a law enforcement officer and which are not. Law enforcement officers must be trained to contain without aggressively or violently or fatally interfering in situations for which their training and instincts and assessment skills are ill-equipped. They must be trained to recognize when to back off and let the appropriate professionals take the lead. Again, just as a peer counselor or social worker or mobile health counselor would call the police if they walked into a violent and dangerous situation that they thought would be a grief counseling session, law enforcement must also be taught to recognize someone who can be talked down by someone who is properly trained in de-escalation and conflict management. Some obstacles to the creation and implementation of trainings might include tracking the efficacy of trainings via professionals who can design assessments for and accurately assess individuals and group cultures. Analysts who can record and interpret that data and the statistics and project outcomes based on the data that comes in. And creating the necessary group of psychological professionals to design further trainings based on data, information, and observation. And that is the barest of necessary requirements for a solid, successful start. Local law enforcement has reportedly gone through trainings even recently, but the community has no idea if they are the right trainings for what our community needs or if the officers have been working to retain what they have and will learn. More than anything, pre-implementation and during implementation, we need a method for recording and tracking and interpreting data. And we need a method and protocols to enforce that training and those rules. And once we have the necessary data, we can create more trainings that better fit and serve our community more closely. Some challenges during officer training and future deployment might include resistance to adjusted and truncated roles, resistance to the possibility of eventual downsizing of forces with lightened loads and lessening the need for militarized manpower. And another challenge is lack of concrete protocols and lack of punitive measures to be taken as a recourse if training and guidelines and applicable laws are ignored, skewed, or broken. Just as sometimes citizens are only civic-minded and ethical because there are prices to be paid for not upholding their end of the social contract, the same is true for law enforcement. They are citizens too and must be accountable not only to each other, but to the law and to their community. Some opportunities, we get to tailor-make law enforcement's duties, responsibilities, and roles from the ground up into the standards of our entire community. We can introduce and maintain transparency and accountability that has long been missing. And we can use it to adjust duties, responsibilities, roles, as well as rules and guidelines as we gain more information and experience. Lessening and limiting the presence of law enforcement in any situation where laws have not been broken. Lessening and limiting the presence of armed officers into a situation that is not high-stress, but can be turned into a high-stress incident and be exacerbated by their presence. And the reputations of law enforcement officers and the reputations of their fellow officers, well-intentioned or not, perceive them into every interaction. This is a chance to not only practice much-needed harm reduction, but to do much-needed damage control. Realizing a set of interim protocols before phasing officer intervention into non-violent incidents, even with all the research, number collecting, and crunching, and analysis, means vigilance, a commitment to figuring out why what does not work, doesn't work. Figuring out what is working and why, then figuring out what can be created to address the vacuums where training, protocol, and tradition are not up to the task. Training law enforcement officers in critical observation, critical thinking, self-control, accountability, and responsibility, and implementation of a situation-appropriate response based on real data, which has been carefully kept and tracked, is only one step. Another equally important step is enforcing interim and post-implementation protocol, rules, guidelines, and trainings. Until a more effective and less dangerous kind of response team and crisis intervention team is set up, the most important safeguard against abuse is follow-through on rules and trainings that the community has agreed upon and put into place to keep everyone safer.
Beetle, thank you. Thank you so much. Again, a quick thanks to Beetle, David, and Raquel. And I think that if you, if you see, I think you can see that there is a continuum of attention that they're, that they're recommending. Both first, looking at who does and does not belong in the criminal justice system. Second is when we go out and, and apply direct attention to both drug addiction and mental health, that there is an informed approach to it. And then setting criteria, which I, I think we heard Beetle talk about, that really ensures that we're monitoring and managing these interventions in a, in a, in a really great way. So again, now we have 15 minutes to take your comments, questions that you might have on any of these three presentations that you've just heard. Please feel free to raise your hand or your electronic hand, and we'd be delighted to recognize you. Okay. Pat?
Hello.
Lisa, Pat, is it Pelicano?
Yes, like the bird with two L's and an O.
Great.
Yeah, no, I appreciate all of these, all the work that y'all are doing. But one thing that stuck out to me, and I just remember hearing it briefly, was that, I think, David, yeah, I have heard about the Cahoots program, and I've heard about a lot of good things that that has done. But I think you mentioned that, like, there's some, oftentimes, like, budget challenges. I remember seeing, like, Rise Up Kingston did this little piece about, like, the, I think the Kingston Police Department's budget in 2019, where they evaluated about like 22% of the police budget goes into things that don't require, you know, police at all, like lockouts and mental health things. And just, I'm wondering if we can move some of that budget, which clearly does not need to be, you know, directed for police activity towards a Cahoots-like program. And also, just want to say that I liked all that Beetle had to say.
So I guess, Lisa, if you'll let David respond?
Yeah, um, yeah, Pat, you know, we've, we've actually been doing research on this for, for the past two years. And I think there, there is, you know, some money in, in, in different areas of the county. There are also some grants that have come, some Bureau of Justice grants that have come through. So I think there's some money there that can also be moved around. I just, you know, I just, at this point, I just, I didn't want to say that I can, I can account for it, you know, but, but I think that there, there is, there, there are funds available. And if, you know, enough people are behind the idea. And the idea, you know, actually saves money for, you know, for our county in, in the long run. So it saves a lot of money. Right. And, and it also, it also frees the police up to do, you know, what, what they're, what they're there to do, you know? This is not what they're there to do. So, so, you know, it's, it's a win-win situation. So hopefully, you know, we can free up some of those funds that you were talking about.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Pat. Jenna? Palkovitz, am I pronouncing it correctly?
Yes, thank you.
Wow, great.
Very good. So I just want to thank the three of you. Very good ideas. Beetle, I have to say, I'm very impressed with your presentation. You were very well-prepared. You have some wonderful ideas. So thank you for all of your work that you're putting into that. I do have concerns. The police budget is already being stretched very thin. I live three houses up on Smith Avenue where the shooting occurred yesterday afternoon. And my four-month-old was actually in the arms of my babysitter in the front window of my home when that shooting occurred. So I do agree that there needs to be funding put into the ideas that were presented tonight. I just don't know that taking away from the police budget is where we should be getting those funds from. I think that we need to press our mayor to dedicate some funds rather than creating more positions that we may not necessarily need. But I do agree. Beetle, I have to say, great presentation. Agree with you wholeheartedly. But I do have concerns about taking away from a ready, thin police budget.
Jenna, thank you. I think you'll notice that all three of our presenters so far have studiously avoided recommending where the money should come from. Because our mandate is to bring forward recommendations that we think will make quality of life and police and community relations stronger. So where those dollars are, are drawn from is really more of a common counsel question than a question for this task force. We might, if asked, we might offer some suggestions. But at the end of the day, our goal and our intention for this work is to make For this work is to make recommendations on how we can make police and law enforcement. Stronger, better, more humane and obviously. Less racist. So that's, that's where our heads are at the moment. Any other questions? Comments?
Lester, this is Summer. I, I work for the city and I just wanted to quickly say to Jenna's point. That in the mayor's proposed budget for twenty twenty-one. He has set aside a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for initiatives. That this task force puts forward. So that's, that's after the police force is fully funded. With, you know, no positions being taken away from, from the police force. And that budget still has to go through the process with the common council, but I just wanted to note that, that we did earmark that money. Hopefully to, to push some of these initiatives forward.
That's really good to know. Thank you, Summer. That's very helpful. So if there are no more questions or comments, we will move to our next group of three. Which will be. Use of force and accountability. And the individuals who will be speaking will be Minya Vigenette first. Dan Gruner, second, and then Andrea Callan. So we'll start with Minya.
Hi, everyone. So we're, I'm focusing on the re-envisioning the police mission. Part of that has already been addressed by the police accountability, police accountability resolution that was passed. On July eighth of this year, where they said, where community organizers and the common council put together. List of items that they wanted us to incorporate into our bylaws and that has come to pass. And they covered quite an extensive amount of issues that they would like to see that the commission be able to address. And to partake in, including training, which we are in the process of getting set up. As well, that talking about anti-bias training, policy training, we are actually due. Before the end of the year to be set up for about twenty-eight hours of training in policy. Associated with the KPD policy manual. We're. Trying to be more transparent with the process and one of the ways we've done that is to start a, we have a webpage up on the. The city website. It's on the police commission webpage. It's Kingston dash New York dot gov slash police commission. And there we've put up updates and we've kept people, you can get up to date information. About what we're doing with training, whether we're hiring. Past meetings are accessible there a lot before. All of that was sort of. Hard to find on the website in different places. We've consolidated it and the idea is to get people to actually understand the process and not have to be searching for it. It was hard before I got onto the commission to even understand what our, what our position was and what our limitations were and what we could actually do. Once we got in. Now we have a list of what the complaint process is. Compliment complaint forms are accessible on that site. We've created a digital. Compliment complaint form that people can access. So they don't need a printer or they don't need a certain type of device to fill out that form. And we've. Now we have contact information for each of the commissioners. So people can actually reach us directly on that website. We've put the city charter and the union contract up there, the current union contract. And so I really encourage people to look at that page and give feedback about anything else, any other information they'd like to. See addressed or questions they'd like to be answered, so that would be accessible for the public. So what some of the issues we are looking at right now. Is limited, limited associations or limitations associated with hiring a more diverse. Population of officers and the limitations associated with the pool of applicants we can draw from. Some of that is being addressed right now, but one of. The issues we have is the, it is. Sorry, have it is the civil service laws, the state civil service laws. And in that, it limits our pool that we can draw from. So if somebody takes a civil service exam. We can only choose from the ninetieth to the ninety-fifth percentile. It's known and understood. That those tests are limited and the scope that of the. Who actually has, sorry, I'm having a little bit, oh, my throat really dried up. About. It's sort of limited in who it's geared towards in the community. So what we're trying to do is reach out to people who can offer. Training on how to sit for those exams, training on how to prepare for interviews. The, the physical fitness test exams and really get people prepared. And then we have to work with the recruitment aspect of that process. So we've been in discussion with Bard College as a possible, possibility of offering a program. One for the Roa is also starting a program at also County Community College where he will, he will be offering some training. And we know as those details come out, hopefully have that out there available for people. And then. Then we also want to be able to make it so that it's people who are actually in the community. Have the ability to be part of the department. It should be more. Department should be made up of people who live in the community. So. There's some other issues that we're talking about in terms of actually the department, the commission doesn't actually have any regular communication. With leadership in the KPD, the tenants, sergeants, and so we're trying to. Set up a way that there's actually more communications that we understand how the policy is being integrated. Policies that are getting passed, how they're actually working and functioning as. And then we're. Also trying to get the commission to be more engaged in community, connecting to the community. Going to meetings, community police meetings, reaching out to people. Just making sure there's a way that we can try to engage and have an ongoing communication with issues that are going on with the community. Bringing that to the police department and trying to improve. The relationship between the two. It's a really tough time to do that right now, but as a permission, we can actually try to. Improve that. So. Some of the other things that we're going to work on is the possibility of actually changing the structure of the commission. There's two options to go in that way. One is to split between having a policy. Commission and a commission that's focused on oversight. Having that division has been brought to, a few people have brought that to our attention. Who have actually served on the commission and, and the mayor and chief has actually mentioned that as a possibility. We're still doing more research on how that would look. There's different oversight committees in different cities. That have either done a hybridized form really successfully or split the two, and it really depends on how it works within the city. And getting community feedback and what people feel would be more appropriate for the city itself. We are looking into including. More anti-bias training for the commission. In the future, but right now we decided to work on, on policy first because that is. Incredibly important for the commission to understand the policies that the KPD follows. Some of the issues we're talking about is, that we've come across and looked at is just. The divided view of what the commission is in this community. So we've got people that feel like having, that having a commission with oversight capabilities is not supportive enough of the, of law enforcement. While many other community members feel like our oversight capabilities don't go far enough. And I feel like it's important that people understand what is within our purview and what is not. That again, we're trying to put that information up on, on that webpage. So. In terms, the biggest question I always get is what can we actually do and what is the disciplinary process? When we decide that we think an officer needs to be disciplined or an action needs to be taken. We can call for it, but then it will, that, the decision we make can be. Contested by the officer, then it goes into, it, the union will take it into arbitration and an independent arbitrator. Will review that case. That can take some time and then their final decision is the final decision based on. Whatever they decide is the final decision. It's also one of the things that we want to say is that if we function and we turn into more. A more robust commission, we have the capacity to actually improve community relations as put forth by other. Commissions that are out in other states and other communities and have successfully implemented some of these changes. We are up against charter change with some of the changes we want to make and that can be a lengthy process. But we're hoping we'll be able to do that, of putting together a proposal for the common council.
Minya, thank you. Thank you very much. Now let's go to Dan, Dan Gruner.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Gruner. Researching and looking into the police accountability, I realize that. What I'm going to talk about probably will not address everyone's concerns. I'm happy to look into any topic. That you might have a concern that I don't cover tonight. What I've done so far is wanted to first, A, learn about what is the Kingston Police Department doing today? How do they address accountability? We then moved into some different specific topics and as time came on. More specific topics were sent to me and I researched those as well, which I'll get to in a moment. Through this process, I did meet with Lieutenant Mike Bons, who's responsible for policy. At Kingston Police Department. Mike was very cooperative, very open to answering questions and. The first time we spoke, we discussed. The Eight Camp Wait Campaign or Recommendations, I should say. And that's, if people are not familiar, that's more of a, a national movement that. Had eight different areas regarding police accountability and how does the Kingston Police Department. Address each of those. So what I'd like to do is just walk you through each of those. And where it stands today, I will make mention that. The Kingston Police Department is currently in the process of updating their policies and manuals. Which you'll hear me speak about in a moment. Recommendation number one requires de-escalation. Kingston Police Department, de-escalation is well defined and present in their use of force policy. This is therefore addressed within their policy. Use of force continuum. Use of force continuums is recognized as a training tool. Sorry, I lost my place for a minute. Levels of force and response to level of resistance met. This is addressed currently in their policy. Ban on chokeholds and strangleholds. These are changes that are being made at the state level. It's New York State Penal Law Section one twenty-one, Lieutenant Bons. They also mentioned that those types of tactics are not trained or taught in Kingston. And that is in development at the state level. Required warnings before shootings. This is addressed in their policy. Ban shooting at moving vehicles. Policy states and officers should only discharge a firearm at a moving vehicle or its occupants. When the officer reasonably believes there is no other reasonable means available to avert the imminent threat. This is addressed in policy, however, it's not recommended by, to the degree recommended by the website. Exhaust all.
Dan, Dan, can you hear me? Dan? Dan? Can you hear me? You're muted and I, something happened to your. I'm trying to unmute you and it's not working. I could, can you hear me now? Dan? You're unmuted here, but we can't hear you. I believe it's something on your end because I have you unmuted.
Dan, while we, while we work this out. Why don't we go to Andrea? And we'll see if we can, we can figure it out. Something, there's a glitch in the, there's a gremlin in the system somewhere. But we'll try to figure that out. And in the meantime, Andrea. You were, the work that you were doing was very closely aligned to the work that Dan was just speaking to. Perhaps you could pick it up.
Yeah, um, yeah, I think, you know, police accountability encompasses a whole lot of things and so. I had specifically looked into use of force. And into the eight can't wait as well. So I'm, so I think, Dan, we had a little bit of a, of an overlap there. But Dan was, was going into each of the individual use of force. The, you know, the sort of these eight tenants of the eight methods of how force are applied. Lisa, I think you might have to mute Dan because now we can hear him. Oh, okay, great. Thanks. So where Dan was going into, I think, a much more detailed.
Okay, so you'll go again after Andrea.
Should I keep going?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I think Dan was getting into a, a more detailed account of each of the various policies. The use of force policies or use of force tactics. I'm going to actually take a bigger picture view and. So I think, you know, if Dan gets his sound back, he can continue to do that, although I think in terms of order, it would have been useful to hear some of that. But in any event, what Dan was really saying was the same conclusion that I had come to. I had done. You know, a review of the, there's a campaign twenty twenty. That really lists out the, the best practices or model policies for. These eight most deadly types of use of force and what can be, what can be done to modify these policies. And so what we've come to find what Dan was, I also heard Dan saying is that. And what I found in my review is that the KPD has either has in place already and has had in place. Previous to the, you know, the unrest of this summer. Use of force policies that do align with these best practices, save for one that I identified, which was, I think, Dan, you started to talk about this. Which involved the shooting at police vehicles. So I, I will not get into each of those minute policy details, Dan. I, you can go back into that as part of your piece. Because really my takeaway was a more bigger picture. So because of the fact that the policies were by and large in line with what the best practices recommended are. So I sort of looked at this from, okay, if we have these policies in place. You know, what is the issue if you, if use of force is still an issue in our community, which I think. You know, we have seen applications of force that have been, just, you know, alarming to the community over the past several years. So, so we were charged with, is thinking of a vision, you know, if we didn't. How did we see this playing out? What was our best vision for this? And, and so from my perspective, after looking at these policies. Rooting back into the rationale is that the sanctity of human life and dignity. And a consistent focus by officers on the proportionality of force used and de-escalation. Ought to be the guiding principles in any use of force. And of course, I think all the law enforcement that are on this call are going to agree with that. Force should very rarely be used. And often I think from a public perspective, it seems to us that when physical force is applied. In a situation, it further escalates. in a situation, it further escalates the situation. So when proportionality is assessed, officers ought to always be thinking downward in this continuum. Again, which I want to recognize is part of the policy, officers ought to be, are, are charged with thinking downward in the continuum. But I want to recognize that despite all the training, you know, how hard that can be. Respect for other human beings is part of this vision, you know, is, is respect for other human beings as complex. And this is, you know, going back to a lot of what Beetle was, was describing, you know, folks are likely experiencing circumstances that officers may be unaware of. And this, this understanding of not having the total picture ought to be the mindset of an officer going into any interaction. Compliance from members of the public may come more easily also if people in general felt respected by police and didn't see police as punishing and authoritarian. And I've heard a lot of discussion over the last several years here in Kingston in the, the community meetings that I've participated in is that, you know, the, these ideas that police are punishing and authoritarian come from more of a national narrative of policing it or not, the truth here in Kingston. And whether we believe that or not, or how we feel about that, I think we have to recognize that there are these perceptions and whether or not, you know, an individual sees that perception or views that as reality. These are all individual assessments that are all valid and important for us to consider as a community. So anyway, you know, at the end of the day, this vision that I'm talking about ties into, and this is, you know, where Dan and I overlap, it ties into accountability and community policing initiatives as well and a lot of also what Beetle and the first group and David were talking about in Raquel in terms of, you know, sort of what is the role of law enforcement and how do they respond to these types of instant, instance, instances? So barriers to successful outcome to this type of vision is, you know, we have to recognize police officers, they do encounter dangerous situations where force may need to be applied to protect the public and officer safety. So, you know, the policies that, that I've reviewed and that Dan was talking about use of force policies, they are very nuanced. And you have to, you know, you do read the language where there is room for officer discretion. And that discretion is oftentimes required because these are, you know, situations that are changing rapidly. And again, officers are focused on public and officer safety. And so there needs to be some amount of discernment by officers. So recognizing that what do we do to support the officers? These officers are finding themselves in actual or perceived threatening situations. So when that happens, there's a, you know, they're triggered with an adrenaline response that is anxiety producing. And even though officers have all this training, that still happens where human beings, when human beings have this, this triggered response, we have a very hard time making thoughtful and rational decisions from this, this state of, of an adrenaline response. Especially when that actual perceived danger is imminent. And then there isn't always time and because of what I'm describing, a literal cognitive ability to think through the training that you've had to respond in a way that provides for that officer discretion to be used in a way that takes into account a lot of the things that I described in the vision about a downward view on this continuum and continuum in about what the individual that they're encountering might be experiencing. So training isn't enough, I think. Practice is needed to gain this conscious awareness or mindfulness over these triggered responses to act, to think before you think and then act, right? There's a legal standard, of course, when you look at case law, talking about how use of force is applied. And the legal standard is, is quote, objective, objective reasonableness. But this standard is only currently reviewed by other police officers and supervisors who are subject to a longstanding culture of, of what others may also have heard of is the blue wall of silence. And so there may be pressures there by that culture to elevate, I'm sorry, to evaluate use of force reports with more leniency. So these could be a barrier, reviewing each use of force report. You know, by an objective third party that's not a police officer supervisor might be very time consuming and it might be very costly. And how would we support that, you know, in our community if we felt that that was a way to bring more transparency or rather, you know, more support in, in supporting officers who have had to use, use force, who may have been found to use it incorrectly, how to retrain that. And other barriers that findings of excess, findings of excessive use by third parties may be difficult to address given disciplinary processes in the union contracts. And that's a whole other can of worms that I'm, I won't get into because we certainly don't have time for that, but I'm, I think Minya and other folks are also looking into that and I will assist with that as well. Opportunities, the, again, as Dan was saying, policies that have been in place and new policies that are currently being drafted aligned with the vast majority of recommendations and model policies that are supported by police accountability groups across the country, including Campaign Zero. And I believe, I'm sorry, I didn't have this in my notes, but I believe it was also the Association of Chiefs of Police, which is a national association that have issued these accountability guidelines. One exception to that I mentioned before was, and again, I won't go into detail because I, I'll let Dan talk about this, but was the, the total ban on shooting at moving vehicles. That's the one policy we do not have in place in Kingston. And so the, again, I won't get into the nuance of that and Dan, if you want to address that, go for it. And if you want to kick it back to me, I can do that too. But existing, so another opportunity is the existing use of force incident reports that are conducted and are filled out when use of force happens could serve as a basis for reviewing, reviewing instances of use of force in groups, group discussions among officers that occur regularly. So officers could have some sort of time to reflect and in space to reflect on the incident where force had to be applied, where they can review their mental and their visceral reactions, how they were able or not able to access what they had learned in their training, what could have been done better. You know, all these, these reflections that we have, that we have the opportunity to take when you come out of a high stress situation. But having these, these opportunities in these spaces among officers in this safe space, among officers who are all sharing in the same realities of having to confront these situations. You know, if this opportunity is provided, it can serve to build a culture of openness and vulnerability and sharing these experiences that come as probably what I imagine is the most difficult part of the job. So I think, you know, to, to effectuate some of the vision of what I was saying up top and recognizing that officers are in these very triggering, a general adrenaline producing experiences. We need to offer support to the officers as human beings to be able to support them, their minds and their bodies to respond appropriately in these moments. So I get, you know, again, providing that support, those, the sort of affinity support groups, I think, might help to do that. But from a data perspective and a transparency perspective, another opportunity is to regularly provide use of force incident reports to the Kingston Police Commission for review. I don't know if there's, you know, something that's already in place that, where that regularly happens. My understanding and from some of my researches, certainly use of force reports are, are subject to FOIL or the Freedom of Information Law. But it would be nice not to have to go through that process and I would, you know, suggest that that would be part of, of, you know, this ask or this policy. Secondly, I thought that I had recently was to provide all, just reviewing the union contract with the, with the police. It's, it's clear that personnel records for each officer are only kept for 12 months or one year. So another way to look at this issue and look at how force has been used by officer is if all police personnel records were supplied to the Kingston Police Commission once per year, once within that 12 year cycle for archiving purposes by the commission or to be posted publicly if that's permissible. And again, some of these things are tied, maybe tied to the union contract and we'd have to look more deeply there. And then finally, the last point is, you know, again, include by reference in new use of force policies, the crisis intervention policy, once that's adopted and that's the, some of the C I T stuff that Beetle was talking about, people in mental health crisis need to be approached differently. And deadly force should never be used unless there is a person, that person is imminently threatening serious bodily harm or death to another person. And so this is something that I, I believe I did read in the, the draft crisis intervention policy. But I, I think that the crisis intervention is so linked with use of force that these two policies ought to be cross referenced and, and cross referenced, especially in the training. So that's it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So Dan, do you want to pick up and kind of, kind of fill out the frame for us a little bit?
Yes. Do you, could you tell me where I went silent roughly?
I think you, you went to moving vehicles was the last one that you, you covered.
Okay, so you, you heard that, but not anything after that? Okay. All right. Could everybody else hear me? We're good?
We can hear you.
Okay, I don't know what happened there. Okay, so the six point or the six recommendation, I should say, on exhaust all alternatives. This, this concept is at the core of all use of force policies and procedures explicitly stated in the procedure manual section of use of force firearms, deadly physical force. Duty to intervene policy provides clear and explicit language addressing the duty to intercede and report. Additionally, all members of the KPD are currently receiving.
Just, just to be clear on that one, the, the intervention is when a police officer sees another police officer going beyond authority. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
The intervention is one police officer engaging with another police officer?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure everyone was clear on that.
Yep. And as I started to say, they also, they're currently receiving training on this topic as well. Comprehensive reporting, use of force reporting is not only addressed in the policy, but also in both New York State Law Enforcement Accreditation Standards and New York State Executive Law Section 837. So that was the, the first conversation I had with Lieutenant Bontz. The second conversation was based on inquiries that were sent to me while I was going through this process. So I'll walk you through each of those. One of the inquiries was release police disciplinary records without a FOIL request. These records are subject to personnel guidelines under the employee records, which are subject to a legal review. In addition, these records are currently protected by New York State Civil Rights Law 50A. Part of that law has been repealed, however, it's not been signed into law yet. This is a issue that is being addressed at the state level. Publicly discuss the contents of the police union contract. The Kingston PBA contract is available at a website called seethroughny.net. That's C T H R O U G H N Y dot net. And I viewed it, you can access that there. Remove police impunity and or non-disclosure of disciplinary records from police contracts. Disciplinary action is addressed included in collective bargaining agreement addressed through the contract. Across New York State, if discipline is included as part of the contract, it remains intact currently. Police activity and accountability. Every citizen incident is recorded via body camera. KPD stores all video camera footage for 180 days. This data is stored through a cloud-based third party called Axon. Regarding police officer discharging their weapon, Lieutenant Bontz, who's been with the force for 23 years, said that KPD officers have discharged a firearm twice in the last 23 years, neither resulting in serious injury. How is it handled if a police officer committed a crime? This actually referred directly to and handled by either the district attorney or the attorney general based on the level of that crime. So that's what I've learned so far. I'd be glad to, when we open up the questions to, you know, address anything or research anything that I didn't cover that people would like to know more about.
Dan, thank you. Thank you so much. As you can see, there, this is a big area. There's a lot of nuance to it and we clearly recognize the importance of it. So happy to take your questions on use of force and accountability. Well, I sure didn't expect this. Any questions? Yeah, Therese. There you go.
Hi there. Thank you. I'm not, I didn't quite catch if this was addressed, but what would accountability look like for inappropriate use of force? What does that actually translate into? Would a police officer be put on probation, suspended, you know, what are the ramifications and what would that procedure look like?
Minya, Andrea, Dan, who would like to take that? Minya, okay?
Hi, Therese. So, so accountability, it was somewhat addressed. Sorry, my, my presentation was a little bit spotty, so it might, it might have just glossed over it a bit too fast. But part of that, and I'm going to also ask the chief to weigh in if I get this incorrectly. But accountability, if we as a commission decide that there's a disciplinary action to be carried out for the officers, it, 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 there's, there's two ways. We can either send it to the chief where he has a window of five days he can work with to either dock vacation pay. And, or if we wanted to go into a disciplinary process, that will, that can actually be appealed by the officer. And then it will go into arbitration based on the PBA contract, the police benevolent association contract. And that arbitration process is out of our hands. It is processed through an independent arbitrator. And they are basically ultimately decide whether our decision will be upheld or whether it will be dismissed. I hope that answers the question. Oh, you're, oh yeah, she's muted.
Okay, I just have a follow up because one of the situations that we've become aware of is that police officers who have a track record of behaving inappropriately can just move from one precinct to another. And I don't know if there's a coordination, at least within New York State, to rectify that flexibility, you know, where you might get kicked out of one precinct and then you go to work in another one. And there, that, that doesn't seem to be communication across precincts to really eliminate troublesome, worrisome police officers that should not be, should not be operating.
Well, depends, from my understanding, it depends on how a specific police department functions. It is not uniform across counties, states, cities. So for instance, the KPD will actually, you will actually get information from other departments if an officer is coming from that department. We actually would probably, we would have the ability to actually talk to other officers within the KPD to actually find out if there's any information that they know about it. So it, it depends. The KPD has lie detector tests that an officer will go through, will see some of their records and some of their history. Other departments don't necessarily have that process, so it depends. And that, that's part of the issue. There's not a uniform process that would necessarily stop one department from hiring an officer.
Chief, since I got you here, what, what happens if an officer is disciplined? And it is beyond the 12 month period that they've had a review? In other words, does that follow them to other law enforcement agencies in the region or the state or does it not? in the region or the state, or does it not?
In some cases it does. It depends on the level of discipline brought forth in front of the, the police officer. There are mechanisms statewide to decertify police officers that have been involved in heinous incidents. So in that particular case, as a statewide database, if an agency looks up John Jones and, you know, John Jones has applied for a position with them, but has been decertified as a, an officer with the, the city of Kingston, then that agency would have access to that. I can tell you from agencies, whether we have officers transferred to different agencies, or we've looked at candidates that have come from different agencies, that one of the things we do require is that we have full access to their personnel folder. And in some cases, they will sign, they have to sign a release that allows us to speak to any department member at all. In some cases, you know, if there's been an incident, personnel complaint, we have access to all that information as well. And if, in most cases, if they're hesitant to do so, that sends up a red flag, obviously, that we would also examine. So as Commissioner Adigeun had mentioned, we also have mechanisms in place for candidates, both certified police officers coming from different jurisdictions and ones that do not have any type of formal police training before they come here, we put them through a polygraph exam. The polygraph exam essentially is two different tiers or two different levels. One for those that have a police officer background. We have questions specific to things that police officers be exposed to. Have you ever taken property from a prisoner? Have you ever struck someone while they're handcuffed? You know, specific questions like that. And then the other one, obviously for civilians, for non-sworn or, or non-trained candidates, those questions may differ slightly. Obviously, in a broader sense, have you been involved in a large number of community crimes, stuff like that? But there are mechanisms in place in Kingston to, to review those files. And even when an officer, although it hasn't happened, when they, when an agency calls and says, we're, you know, this officer is on the list and interested in picking them up, essentially, then they would have access to our full personnel folder as well. And as long as they sign a release, we're allowed to send that information out.
That's, that's enormously helpful. Thank you. That's incoming. What about outgoing? What, what kind of parameters are there when there is a, an officer that was a disciplinary issue? And then they apply for a position at some other police department? What is, what is Kingston's policy?
So that depends. It depends on how the discipline was written up, what the agreement to the, to the formalized discipline includes. In some cases, and again, you know, it hasn't happened here, but there may be an agreement that says that if an officer does decide to transfer out, that we're allowed to share the results of that investigation with the, with the agency, the other agency. You know, unfortunately, as Commissioner Adigeun had mentioned, there isn't a set standard for candidate backgrounds. There are agencies that, you know, our obligation really is the written civil service exam. We're a full-time only agency. We don't have part-timers in the Department of Sworn Personnel. So with us, we, we do the full background, including the medical, the polygraph, the psychological. But I can't say that that's the case in some agencies. They may not do those backgrounds. So unfortunately, as I mentioned on the first night of, of the task force meeting, we are all kind of painted with the same brush. And when an officer conducts themselves an inappropriate matter unprofessionally, the first question I have is, what was their background investigation like? What was their training like? Where did they get that from? But there are mechanisms in place that allow us to share information. Should an officer leave our department to go to another one? Or certainly mechanisms in place to safeguard that we are interviewing candidates, potential candidates, that would serve the community of Kingston well.
Excellent. Chief, thank you so much. Thank you. Let's see, Rose, you have a question?
Hello, hi everyone. So I just have a very quick question. So we're, we're talking a lot about KPD right now and how, you know, there's accountability for KPD officers. What I'm wondering is what is the accountability for officers outside of KPD in Kingston? How do we, because obviously the climate and the environment has changed in Kingston. And many people are being pulled over by state troopers and by KPD riding along with state troopers. That's been the majority in Kingston. So what do we do to hold outside agencies accountable? And what power does our police commission have over New York State troopers? Thank you.
Minya?
Hi Rose. Absolutely none. We, that's not, it's a, it's a completely different department. As we have on our KPD, I mean, our KPC webpage, we have linked the complaint forms for county and state. But it is not in our purview to address complaints directly against those officers as it's a different department entirely. Is there is a split in the car with a KPD officer and a state or county trooper? Then if that incident directly involved the KPD officer and that information is obtained by us, then we address that issue.
Thank you, Minya. Chief, do you want to add anything to that? Do you want to add anything to that question? Yeah, okay.
So you mentioned about the recent law enforcement partnership with the state police and the sheriff. I think one of the things that's to be kept in mind is that there has been dialogue at the community meetings where there have been members of both those agencies present, so community members can address them directly. But specifically, if there's an incident involving a state trooper or sheriff's deputy, then you would go back and, and report that information directly to the sheriff, or in this case, the captain of, of the, the area here. So I think there's mechanisms in place that, you know, if there's any type of misconduct, I'll, I'll say, or if there's a complaint, that both those agencies have mechanisms within themselves. As the commissioner mentions, we don't have authority over them here. They operate under their own policies, procedures, and guidelines. The sheriff's deputies report directly to the sheriff and the state police have a mechanism, both locally to, to report it to their, to their brass, their higher command as well. So both they actually, both agencies act professionally. We've seen that firsthand in cases where there's been questions asked about certain information or certain incidents that have, that have occurred when a KPD officer is present, we can go to our body camera and review the incident, but we're looking at more of the conduct of the KPD officer than, than the other ones at all. If it should result, and it hasn't, but if it should result in information that shows any type of unprofessionalism on anyone's part of the other agencies, that that information can be shared with those agencies, should they feel the need to follow up.
Thank you. I, I just wondered that it undermines the whole purpose of the police commission to have outside agencies. I, I am concerned about that, but I'll leave it at that. But thank you very much, Chief Tinti. I appreciate that.
Hi. So I do have a question on internal mechanisms for accountability. So I was wondering about the Kingston Police Department's whistleblower policy. If there is one in place, and if there is one, if there is a way, again, that the person should remain anonymous and that those who do utilize the whistleblower hotline or, or policy are able to have that complaint or that concern actually be handled by a third party, not necessarily their own department. So I'm just wondering, again, in terms of having internal accountability around a whistleblower policy and because there is external accountability of, of a complaint, but I was just really curious about that.
Minya, can you address that? About whistleblower?
Sorry, I thought the chief was starting to talk.
I can. The chief was going to answer. Sorry, go ahead.
I apologize, Commissioner. I didn't, I didn't know if you were going to respond or not. As far as the whistleblower policy, if an officer sees another officer acting inappropriately, if we're talking about specifically about misconduct, they have an obligation to report it. If there's apprehension on that officer's part, they have mechanisms to go either to the district attorney's office, to another state agency. In some cases, they also have the capability to contact the attorney general's office and do a completely disconnected investigation on their own. So there are those mechanisms in here if there's a level of distrust within the command staff or the supervision or within the city. And that exists not only for the complaint process, but also for officers individually as well. And I hope I answered that appropriately. I wasn't sure exactly where you were going with it, but.
Well, we, we have time for one more question on this area. And Khan, I think you, you were next in the queue.
Yes, thank you. I have a question when it comes to the discipline of an officer. If, from what I just heard, the police commission is a recommending body, somewhere the the buck has to stop with relative as to what the outcome would be. How frequent is it or is it not that you could have a civilian board of people saying, we really have a problem with X behavior of an officer that may not align with the individual responsible for discipline and the role of the people and the disciplining officer are not aligned and could even result in an arbitration where, again, the people who are bringing forward the concerns, those who've been who have applied from the community to say that we'd like to help set the standards for law enforcement behavior where that wish may be questioned, challenged, not enforced. I guess I'd like to hear about that one from the disciplining police supervisory channel and at the, at the, at the arbitration level. How often are these decisions or recommendations not in sync with each other and what happens in that case?
Minya and, and the chief can probably best address that. Minya, go ahead.
I was going to have to offer the chief for some of that information.
Yeah, no problem. So if I understood the question correctly, the, the issue that you're bringing up is whether or not that the commission, as you mentioned before, is in the position to recommend discipline. So Officer Smith does something that violates the policy procedures. The commission then recognizes it and says, we feel that the officer should be disciplined for 30 days suspended, no pay. And at that point, they can so draw up charges and say, this is the discipline that we want. The officer at that point says, I agree, you know, I agree that my behavior violated the policy, signs off on it, takes us 30 days on the beach, information gets put into the personnel folder and they move on from there. If the officer feels that 30 days is too harsh, there can be some negotiation in there if that's what they'd like to do. And they can say, I, I feel, I feel that I'm responsible for some of this. However, 30 days is unreasonable. I believe 10 days is more applicable. And at that point, the city can come back and say, okay, we'll take 20 days. The officer can say, no, I'm sticking with 10, and the information gets sent to an independent arbitrator. And the city representing the commission and the, the union will then present both sides and independent arbitrator will then decide and finalize, and make it a final decision on what it should be carried out as. They may find that the officer did not violate the policies and procedures. They may find that the officer violated policies and procedures. And then the city's recommendation of 30 days stands. So this, this independent arbitrator does have effectively, it acts as a court where the officer has a voice through his, for lack of a better term, his defense or his union representation. And the city also has a voice through their representation, through their attorney as well.
Thank you, chief. Thank you so much. So we will now move on. Our next category is recruitment, training, and morale. And our presenters will be Chief Tinti, Manuel Blas, and Tony Davis. We'll start with Chief Tinti. You're, you're working overtime, chief.
It's been a long night. We had a commission meeting before this and now this and, but it's all good work. This is excellent work. And again, I'd like to take the opportunity to commend Lester and Lisa for doing all, really a lot of this, right? The coordination is tremendous. So, but I am here tonight as part of this task force and I have been over time because I, I am really trying to work with the community to better community and police relations in Kingston. As you're all aware, you know, maybe not, but I'll say this, I've been chief for over eight years now. I've served only this department. I came on in 1992. I've seen changes throughout. I've, I've, I've served under Chief Riggins when I first came on and then under Chief Keller. There has been some changes in the commission makeup and we've seen some highs and lows, both in the, in the community aspect of it and within the department. So one thing that, that I felt strongly about it, as the title points out, is the engagement or the relationship between what we consider to be the rank and file and the police leadership. And when I talk about the leadership, I'm talking about myself as the chief. We have a deputy chief's position. We have three lieutenants, numerous sergeants, and that level of supervision exists day to day. It's 375 or 365-day operation, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So you talk about managing a group of, at this point, 69, but soon to be 71 officers that are working holidays, midnights, and there, there, there tends to be some difficulty sometimes in connecting with them and then understanding, you know, how to get messages across properly. So but the biggest question is how do I tie the day-to-day operations and some issues that come from morale and that relationship into the community? And, and how do we make sure that, that those officers who serve the community directly under our command, whose leadership are able then to carry out their mission essentially in serving the community properly and just? It's an issue. It absolutely is. And I think that for me, I really kind of, when I saw this topic, I said, this is something I want to drill down on. Cops are people. We come from community. And when, you know, when we hire a cop, they are a community member, they're a candidate. Whether they came from Kingston or live in Kingston or worked around Kingston before this, they are community members. And for us, like any organization, like most of you, there are times when you work in an organization that can be challenging at times. And I, I used to use the word difficult, but Lester's taught me to use the word challenging because I think it is applicable here. There are many challenges that we have to take on. So there's deadlines, there's a lot of pressures, both internally and externally. Relationship issues, both, you know, formal and informal throughout, you know, an officer that may have difficulty with a family matter, maybe a family member who's, you know, possibly dying or exposed to something, they bring that back. There are issues with that, but the challenging process to see how we can build a relationship both at the leadership level with the rank and file and extend that so that the rank and file then move on to serving the community properly as well. So officers that feel valued and trusted by their management and their supervisors are more likely to take those feelings, those positive feelings out to the community. And I think that's important. That interaction is tremendous, right? We, we don't want bad interactions with the community. We're here to serve them. That's, that's really the goal of this. So tonight, I'm going to outline some of the, the actions that we hope to take as KPD management, really in an effort to build trust and, and, and positive feelings. And I think, again, to commend Lester through the Peaceful Guardian Program, as a result of that, you know, the report that you put back, put out to us for review, kind of showed us, hey, listen, this is what we need to do, that there are some, some relationship issues that we've got to build on. So hopefully, and I believe that if we're successful, that this will not only improve the relationship between the police, the Kingston police and the community members. Because these officers will feel respected in that they in turn will respect community members. So that's, that's really the kind of the reason I took this on. I feel it's a, it's an important role. It is challenging to do that, as I mentioned, across three shifts, across time. You know, my schedule doesn't allow me all the time to, to come in and meet these officers, so there is difficulty there. I rely on my supervisors and my managers to do, to do that. But to drill down, we talked about reinstituting on a regular basis, a recognition or award ceremony. I think for us, we've done them in the past, very sporadic. One thing that we did not try is to actually roll the rank and file members into essentially what, what I'm considering to be a peer-approved award or recognition ceremony. I think that, that's pretty good as far as like their input. The, the relationship right now is, or the awards recommendations are usually completed by supervisors and managers. But to have rank and file actually weigh in on it on a regular basis, we put that out before, we've asked for recommendations. I think the participation now has to be a little bit more. I think the participation now has to be a little bit more aggressive. Command staff, some of the concerns, obviously, as I mentioned before, is that we're not, the high-level command staff, lieutenants and deputy chief and the chief, are not being able to engage the officers, the rank and file officers, because of the split weekends and so on. So there would have to be a mechanism in place to allow us essentially going on patrol shifts. Would get into uniform, put the vest on, get into the cars, and engage the officers in their own environment, rather than have them come into my office or go downstairs to a lineup room or patrol room, engage them then, actually work the shift, kind of, you know, answer the calls with them. And I think that may go a long way. It's been successful in other agencies. It just comes down to how do we make that work on a regular basis? So listening sessions, I think for us, the one thing that I don't personally do enough of, but try to, I only deal with the problems. When officers have an issue, they come to me or they go to the deputy chief and then it's brought to my attention. But on a regular basis, there should be, for lack of a better term, a listening session that officers, we do that now with communities, with the community. You know, as a result of the blue-gray or law enforcement partnership, we've had regularly scheduled community meetings, difficult dialogue at times, but successful. And I think that really does help. The decision-making within the department is usually, although we follow the recommendations and policies and procedures set forth by the commission and the mayor, within our own agency, there are decisions that can affect the rank and file to roll them into more of a review process before those decisions get put out. I think that's also tied into getting their input. In some cases, the decisions are, this is what we got to do. And I put it out there through email, make sure the supervisors are clear and understand what they have to do. And then it hits, they hit the ground. But a lot of times, there's questions that perhaps we as supervisors and managers weren't aware of, that the officers in the cars, the ones on the street, the ones engaging the community on a regular basis, they're the ones that should be asked, hey, if we thought about this, what about that? And I think that only could lead to success. So we have a Kingston Police Benevolent Association, the union that oversees or protects, negotiates contracts, and then to some degree offers protection to the officers when it comes to any claims against them. That maybe they should meet with the locally elected officials on a regular basis as well. And again, you know, to some degree, there has been discussion, but that usually takes place when there's contract talks. You know, I think beyond that, there should be, again, as a community meeting type of approach, that should be also considered. So and lastly, I think for us, we do it because we have one lieutenant that oversees all of patrol, but on a regular basis, ask each of the supervisors to come in as a group of every shift on a very regular basis and have them come back and kind of just reemphasize their roles. And again, conduct listening sessions on their behalf when it comes to questions of supervision or management. I believe that we are equipping them properly. I believe that we support them properly, that we train them properly. We are an accredited agency. And as those other members of the task force see, that accreditation outline, those standards really help us guide through these difficult situations and not only address the high liability areas, but also areas of staffing when it comes to how to treat people properly, both internally and then externally when it affects the community. So I really believe strongly in this. And this has opened my eyes to some degree as far as what we can and can't do. But ultimately, how we can tie this, the leadership and the rank and file relationship, to serving the public better in Kingston.
Excellent. Thank you, chief. So Manuel, Manuel Blass.
Hello, everybody. Good night. The topic that I would like to discuss in this particular task force is something that we should be aware of, a better definition of the roles and responsibilities of the KPD. With this in mind, is just to describe and have a better understanding of what are the entities or the full, all stakeholders that works in the city of Kingston. As Chief Tinty has mentioned it before, is the KPD, which is the Kingston Police Department. There is the KPC, which is the Kingston Police Commission, the PBA Union, which is oversee the old contracts of the old police officers, as well as the community. All those four stakeholders, they need to be involved. And we should not just lead one part to another one. Everybody should be working together in order to make it more successful. If we're going to do any updates, training, new policies, anything, all of those four entities need to be working together. That is what I'm looking for, a better definition of the roles and responsibilities. In this case, the name is only defined in the Kingston Police Department, but it should be the four entities. The KPD must create procedures and protocols which helps citizens, like me, a person of color, a person with different languages, to feel a little more comfortable, to safe and engage with the police officers. Things that will be at and comfort the citizens being informed by their rights. For example, I can be stopped in the police. I can say, yes, my name is Manuel Blass. But when I have an interaction, I probably a little nervous, I'm probably a little bit confused why I got pulled over. Maybe I got pulled over because I did a mistake. But I just need to be aware of my mistake. So in the past, in the past year, the Kingston Police Department has implemented a new acts, a new trainings where the police officer needs to present themselves with a business card and tell to the person who has been pulled over or detained, why and why is it that they are detaining that person? They need to present with a business card where it says the name. As a Spanish speaker, sometimes I can hear, oh, yes, Joe Smit. But I don't know how, probably, I know how to spell Smit, but sometimes it could be a different last name. And it could be a little hard because I'm nervous and I'm trying to figure out what I did wrong. So if the police officer comes to me and tell me, oh, this is the problem, I'm pulling you over for this. With that, what I want to say is that the responsibility of knowing these new acts, new trainings, new entities is just not for one department. It's not just for the Kingston Police Department. It's for the community, for the Kingston Police Commission, for the PBA, and for the whole entities of the city of Kingston. I think we should work together in order to make it more successful. The Kingston Department has been very committed to print the business cards at the beginning of the year. But for some reasons, and maybe one of the reasons is the COVID-19. And as today, so far, if I get pulled over, probably I will not get a business card from the police officer who can me stop. So it's not only, if I, as a community member, I know that that is some requirement, then I will be getting pulled over and I will ask him to the officer, can I have your business card, please? That is something that the community has the power to ask and to order to make it success. All of these trainings and all of these things is going to be only success and it's going to be only successful in the future if we all four participate together. That is what I'm looking for, a better definition. Some of the barriers as well is that no, everybody oversee the protocols. So we need to make sure that everything take place and how to follow up from the beginning to the end. There are a lot of more opportunities. The Kingston Police Commission meets every single month and they come with more suggestions, advice to the Kingston Police Department. But it's not only the definition of the KPC, it's the whole community. And I think if we help to define a better solution and a better entities, I think we can do a little bit better.
Manuel, thank you. Thank you so much. And Tony, Tony Davis?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Do I have to share my screen or anything?
There you go. No, you don't have to.
All right. Tony Davis here. My core problem that I had to deal with was how bias affects police work and mistrust many communities of color feel towards the police. And I researched in four different, let's say, four different studies, and a little bit of four different studies. And the first study I looked at or received some information was is the doll test. So basically, I'm just going to read this as it states. All we need to do is revisit the doll test administered by Dr. Kenneth and Mamie Clark in the 1940s, 50s, and then repeated in 2015. This study shows that children that between the ages of two and seven were shown dolls are pictures of children with different shades of color, from pure white to very dark brown. Roughly 65 to 70% of the children interviewed, black, white, and Latinx consistently identify the white or near-white dolls in pictures of being smarter, friendly, and prettier. Why find the dolls and pictures of darker brown children as stupider, meaner, and uglier? These prejudices are ingrained so early and they're reinforced so pervasive that the bias is both visceral and unconscious. I went on to look at another study by Peter Drucker, a business consultant and author who once said, "Culture beats strategy every time." This could be the greatest barrier to overcoming symptomatic racism in law enforcement by asking members of the law enforcement to suddenly contravene four centuries of sanctioned abuse and discrimination by treating all Black Americans equal and humanely is a daunting task that will not be easily accomplished. However, we can take concrete steps starting today to make sure that people of color in the city of Kingston are not more frequently, are not more frequently stopped by our law enforcement department and that when they are stopped, they are treated with respect. I've got some research here, got some data. In 2019, out of approximately 73 arrests in the city of Kingston, 42% were people of color in comparison to the estimated 14.6% of the population that they represent. While now all these arrests were made by the Kingston Department, it does tell us that we are disproportionately arresting people of color in our city and that we should examine ways to improve these outcomes. I went on to look at another study by Stanford University, Dr. Jennifer Earhart, author of "Bias: Uncovering the Hidden Prejudice That Shapes What We See, Think, and Do." With the team of researchers, she discovered the association between African-Americans and crime is so powerful that just thinking about violent crime can leave people to focus their attention on dark faces. During her study, when police officers are shown an image of a white person's face and a black person's face, the black person's face is much more likely to draw their attention when those officers are prompted to think of shooting, apprehending, capturing, or arresting, she said. And the last study I read and I looked at was in Deconstructing White Powers with Dr. Robin D'Angelo, where she states that when white people say, I don't see color, I was taught to treat others as the same. I know people of color and other similar quotes, they don't understand the power of implicit bias. Dr. D'Angelo goes on to say that most bias is unconscious and that makes it very, very dangerous because it drives our behavior, but we are not aware of it. So some solutions. One, work with the city of Kingston Police Department to implement annual implicit bias training. But to have the data to see if this is actually working. Two, create highly-prescriptive protocols for engagement between law enforcement and citizens. For example, our Earhart and her team worked with a task force in Oakland, California Police Department to reduce the number of stops they were making of people not committing any serious crimes. She goes on to say, when we settled on a simple approach to reducing stops, and that was to push officers or ask themselves a question before each and every stop they make. Question, is this stop intelligence-led, yes or no? And do I have prior information that ties this particular person to specific crime? Adding that checkbook made a huge difference in Oakland, California, Earhart says. In 2017, Oakland officers made roughly 32,000 stops. But after implementing this question, in 2018, officers made about 19,000 stops. Obstacles to this, as with any change, there are many obstacles to those changes. The potential obstacles to these changes could be law enforcement agreement to these changes and the potential funding of these changes. As we stated before, the mayor, as Summer has stated, and then, you know, as a member of the common council, and the mayor has, and director diverted and funds in the budget, this upcoming budget, and to implement some of these recommendations from this task force. Also, another obstacle would be even with training, incidents of racial bias may still happen. So even with the training, racial bias may still happen. Even the training were implemented by the city of Kingston Police Department, the charge is to rigorously evaluate the training. So again, evaluate the training in the long run. If bias training were evaluated, we would be able to get a better understanding of what does and doesn't work in training law enforcement officers about biases. Opportunities, I believe that changes are possible with some different methods of policing. And although even with training, incidents of racial bias may not be eliminated, but it can be managed. As Earhart states in her research, we can use evidence-based approach to improve police-community interactions and to maintain justice. So there are many racial bias training resources that I've searched and some available online and in person, and some such as Silver State Consulting Group, the New York Unconscious Bias Training by Media Partners, as well as a local training that has been utilized by the Ulster County Sheriff's Department and which is presented by SUNY Newport Professor of Black Studies, Ed Lawson. So there are many opportunities out there and we just have to be able to sit down and have a conversation and with all the parties to decide which best way to go. Thank you.
Tony, thank you so much. So now we'll take your questions and Chaya, you've been patiently waiting. You're first. You'll need to be unmuted. Give Lisa a second there to unmute you.
Oh, I asked, there you go.
Okay.
All right. So we had learned that there were 1,290 traffic stops with this increased policing that has recently happened in the last few months in Kingston. Do we have data as to what was the racial makeup of those people stopped? How many people were African-American, Latinx, other people of color? How many people were white? Do we have that data?
Chief, again, you're the only one here that could possibly answer that question. Do you have a response?
No, unless they were ticketed, we don't track that data on the stops. And even then, the New York State driver's license doesn't have race on it. So we're not, we don't record that information on there at all. Only the arrest reports, when arrests were being made, is documented based on race.
I have a second part to the question.
Please, go ahead.
It was also reported that over 1,000 people were issued by the police, they were issued warnings. I don't really know what the warning means, but does the warning result in some kind of police record? And if it doesn't result in some kind of police record, does your name get entered into some kind of criminal justice in the criminal justice system in some way? Is this a gateway into the criminal justice system?
Simply no. On a traffic stop, an officer, if I'll use an equipment violation, an officer turns the corner and sees a vehicle that has a brake light out. He initiates the stop, approaches the driver, lights his registration. I told you because you have a taillight out. There's a dialogue that occurs. At that point, the officer can determine, use their discretion to either issue a summons or what we call a warning. That warning is, please get it fixed. This is a safety violation that could incur, that could incur an accident. So please get it taken care of. If a ticket is issued, then that person would then have an obligation to fix the equipment violation. If they do so within 24 hours and get it verified through an inspection station or a law enforcement agency, then the ticket goes to court as completed and that person is no longer obligated to report to a judge at that point. So if it's a warning, then there is no record of that stop short of what any agency may require. But in most cases, they'll look at the license and if the officer determines that a warning is best in that situation, hey, I went through that stop sign, I'm sorry, I'm in a rush, I gotta pick up my kid. In that case, the officer says, okay, just please slow down, be safe, listen to the law. And that would be the end of it. There is no formal record.
So I guess I would just like to say that it could be one of our recommendations that we follow the data, that we need to know the race and ethnicity, any information about people who are stopped. Otherwise, we will not know if people are being racially profiled.
So be more granular about the information. So we be more granular about uh, the uh, the information that we're gathering is your suggestion.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Uh, anyone else? Andrea? Did you want to in offer something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say there, um, uh, I'm a board member of the New York Civil Liberties Union of the Hudson Valley and uh, there is model legislation uh, that I can get my hands on that does um, uh, do exactly what you're suggesting, Chaya, in terms of collecting this data uh, based on on simply traffic stops and Chief Tintia, you know, your, I, you know, your comment about how this is not uh, races and ethnicities not included on the driver's license, the bill is written um, to identify based on someone's uh, their own uh, articulation of their identity or their perceived identity. So um, that's language that I'm, you know, of course, willing to share with the task force. And if that's another issue that we um, can take up, uh, I think what I've got is pretty close to legislative language that can just be handed over to the the common council.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Andrea. Uh, any other questions? All right. Well, we go to our final uh, group of three. Uh, and this one is community input, excuse me, community policing is what we're taking a look at. And our, our presenters are Amy Shapiro, Naima Mohammed and Jimmy Buff, and we'll start with Amy.
Thank you. So my uh, topic is police in Kingston Public Schools. So in a list of demands given to Mayor Noble and a petition signed by almost two thousand people, members of our community have asked for school resource officers to be removed from the Kingston Public Schools. The rationale for removing the SROs includes the assertion that children in the Kingston City School District have fallen victim to racial profiling, violence, sexual harassment, and trauma at the hands of the police. Additionally, research has shown that police contact can hinder children's educational performance through negative health consequences related to stress, fear, trauma, and anxiety. And especially for students of color and those with disabilities who are more likely to be harshly punished for ordinary misbehavior. Research has also shown that the arrest rates of children increase substantially when police officers are present in schools, which feeds the school-to-prison pipeline. And a survey of students from a number of large California districts found that while sixty-one percent of white students agreed that they felt safer around the police officer at their school, just forty-one percent of black students felt the same way. So what is a potential solution? Well, the ACLU ACLU of New York has written a sample, a sample memorandum of understanding for used by school districts and law enforcement agencies. The MOU describes a set of policies intended to limit the ways that we know police in schools can harm kids and their families. These policies are based on the experiences of the ACLU representing students in situations caused by the over interference of police in day-to-day school operations. The sample MOU MOU includes the following important language. Although some student behavior may meet the technical definition of a crime or violation under New York state law, it is inappropriate to subject students to criminal legal consequences for normative child and adolescent behaviors. The school administration will respond to these as normative child and adolescent behaviors. Shall not request the interventions of SROs when responding to these behaviors. And students shall not be arrested or subjected to criminal prosecution for the following offenses. Disorderly conduct, harassment, graffiti, criminal mischief, obstructing governmental administration or resisting arrest. Surprisingly, sometimes simple situations, like a student forgetting something at school and trying to return after hours can escalate and result in criminal charges like those that I just listed. The ACLU's MOU serves to ensure that SROs help young people feel like they belong in a school rather than use their police powers in situations like this one. My understanding is that an MOU already exists between the school district and the police department. However, I believe it is not working, or we would not have community members demanding the removal of the SROs from our schools. I propose that the current MRU is revised so that it uses the language provided by the ACLU of New York to ensure that our children are not criminalized for normal adolescent behavior. And if an MOU that does not criminalize our children for normal adolescent behavior cannot be agreed upon, then the contract should be canceled and the money saved should be reinvested into mental health and community resources that provide our children with the services they need to reduce and correct misbehavior. Finally, the Kingston High School Jefferson Student Code of Conduct offers restorative justice as a voluntary alternative to the outcomes specified for student misbehavior. Since restorative justice is an alternative meth- method of discipline that encourages people to take ownership and solve problems together while maintaining respect, delivering equity, and encouraging reflection and growth. I propose that this should no longer be a voluntary, but a mandatory outcome for all levels of behavior in the code of conduct.
Amy, thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, and now we'll go to Naima. Uh, Lisa, there.
I did, yeah, I did unmute her.
Uh, it's, it doesn't look unmuted.
Okay. Hi, good evening.
Okay.
Uh, my name is Naima Mohammed. Um, and I have fostering positive relationships between the police and the community. Um, and the core problem that I chose was like the distress between the police and the community. Um, if we go down memory lane, policing was created to control certain populations. And the South patrols were created to monitor runaway slaves to preserve, preserve the slavery system. In the North, they were, they were to control immigrants moving into cities. One can assume that this distrust comes from the rooted institutionalized racist history of police. Um, I came up with, or at least I can, I kind of stole this idea. But um, to have the uh, have community ambassadors. So the main focus, the main idea behind having community ambassadors was to develop a trip the to develop, develop trust to help this trust gap that we have between the police and the community. They would act as liaisons. Um, I don't know how many we would have in the community. I don't know if we would have, you know, several spread out or have certain ambassadors for different parts of the community. Those are future things that we can, that we can build upon, but the goal is to ultimately build trust. So if there was a problem, community members can go to these ambassadors and the ambassadors can guide them, lead them to um, solutions, advice. Um, police etiquette, um, have open hours. Uh, with this pandemic, people might not be uh, feel comfortable going into somewhere to talk to these ambassadors. We can hold Zoom calls, um, Skype, Google Meet, anything, have like certain hours um, so that people can come on. Um, this relationship would also build trust for the police with the community, so the police can go to ask what's going on in certain parts of the community, um, so that dialogue is happening. The ambassador will definitely be someone to foster conversation and facilitate these conversations. Uh, police officers can be on the calls during the Zoom calls or the, or the open hours, you can say. Um, I propose that the community vote these people in. Um, I also don't want to discriminate or um limit the pool of candidates. So I'm also proposing to have some type of class or like the police officers or the police enforcement can hold classes to educate the community on uh, police procedures. We would definitely want these candidates to have knowledge about the police and the procedures and how to go about things, have that background knowledge. But I do think it's important to give people the opportunity to learn because it wouldn't make sense, let's just say, the African-American um, community doesn't, you know, they don't trust the police. There's a good chance that they might not have the education behind um, what they can and cannot do, their rights and things. Because that's like untouched territory. I'm speaking for myself. There's not a lot of things that I know. Um, and I'm always looking for the answers of, you know, what, what, what kind of agency do I, do I have? So the ambassadors would definitely um, increase the knowledge for the community in that area. Um, the barriers of this is the community being reluctant to these ambassadors. Um, if people do not trust the police, anyone that's connected to the police may become they. So that's a barrier. We want to be able to foster a good relationship between everyone and they play the middleman. So I can see that that be, I can see that becoming a barrier. So we have to figure out how that happens. And I think voting people in will kind of secure that, um, or hopefully. Um, I think these ambassadors should have some identifying marks, um, either something on their car so people can identify them. Have a phone number, like I said, have open hours. Um, and I think the Zoom calls and all of that would prevent people that do not have cars um, to get to these people. So uh, I'm hoping that the community ambassadors would be able to build trust between the police and the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Naima. Uh, let's see, I think it's Jimmy. Jimmy, Jimmy Buff?
It's me. Uh, good evening, everyone. Thanks for hanging in through a long evening. Uh, the thing I've been looking into is procedural justice and, you know, I'm not an expert by any stretch of the imagination, um, but I've been looking into it and I'm hoping to present a basic idea about it tonight. Uh, procedural justice, it's a multi-layered term with uh, a few different aspects to it, but for these purposes, we're going with this definition, uh, definition. Uh, procedural justice focuses on the way police interact with people. It emphasizes treating people with dignity and respect, and this is super important. It gives people a voice during encounters, which underscores equal footing and promotes community trust. You know, the nostalgic view of how policing was done in the past is not real for many people of color. Uh, the image of the beat cop who knew everybody and who lived in the same place as the people they were sworn to serve and protect and where relationships were formed as a result. Police encounters too often follow a command presence type model where the law enforcement come in and seize the situation with over power and with no accounting for how people react or don't to that. I mean, we've seen that in Kingston a few years back when that police officer who came up to Fabian Marshall and without seeming explanation or justification, crash landed into the day of that young man on his way to work. You know, no reasonable person should be expected to respond to the aggression that began that encounter and which led to the escalation that resulted in the use of force. The video of that encounter followed a pattern we've seen in videos from around the country. Um, and those videos often in death and in death, and and this one was um uh, bad enough, but at least it didn't end in 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 that manner. But it followed that same pattern. And uh, you know, more recently, the way uh, the Bard professor, the dean of inclusiveness and diversity, no less, was profiled in Midtown. And actually, uh, he's here in this, this meeting tonight. You know, I'm a, a straight white man and is in my late fifties and um, I've experienced the imbalance in the power dynamic when stopped by the police for a minor traffic infraction, you know, and and the anxiety that that interaction provokes in me is far greater than the potential of a hundred dollar fine. And that angst comes from the power imbalance in that interaction. You know, I'll also add that I'm, I'm not worried about, uh, what I'm not worried about is a white person is dying as a result of that interaction, you know, and anxiety beyond comprehension for, for those of us who don't live with it on a, on a regular basis. So procedural justice can be policing from a peripheral view versus a top-down view. For example, we're all equals in most encounters. The process of decision-making and policing in count, uh, interactions requires transparency and openness. Decisions should unfold out in the open as much as possible. And the reasoning behind decision-making should be explained clearly when appropriate. People want an opportunity not only to understand what is happening, as Manuel was noting before, but also to feel they have an opportunity for voice to ensure their side of the story is heard. So many times, that's not part of interactions. No one wants to feel their futures being decided upon at another person's whim. People want a voice or representation in decisions that may directly affect them, like being given a ticket or being arrested or going to jail. We all want decision-making to be guided by impartiality, ensuring that biases do not influence the decision and ultimately the outcome. Procedural justice focuses on the way law enforcement, particularly frontline officers, the people out on the street and other legal authorities interact with the public. It's a framework with which officers can build effective policing efforts in their communities as they interact with the public. It refers to the practice of treating the public in all encounters fairly, providing them with voice during the interaction and ensuring the process is transparent and impartial and demonstrating a level of respect. When the principles of procedural justice are applied in all interactions, there's a greater willingness to by the public to voluntarily obey the law and cooperate with the police. Uh, consequently decreasing overall crime rates and enhancing officer safety, which is something that Tony was noting uh, in his comments about Oakland. External police uh, procedural justice leads to relationships in which the community has increased trust and confidence in the police and believes there are shared interests, goals, and values between the community and the police. You know, it's our understanding that the KPD has indeed received some one-off procedural justice training, maybe an eight-hour um, session. You know, it's a one-time thing. It's uh, it, it's our suggestion that this training be ongoing with regular maintenance. So it's a continuing process with regular evaluation and remembering that community trust is not a slogan. It's, it's an action.
Jimmy, thank you. Thank you so much. So we now will open it up for questions uh, for Amy and Naima and Jimmy.
Oh, it's me again. Um, I wanted to jump in the conversation about the SROs. Um, I was an intern at Kingston High School last year. I'm a grad student for social work. And I saw the SROs in school. Um, I remember them in middle school, specifically Officer Harry. Um, I don't know if that's because he's just been in the, in the systems for so long, that's why I remember him. Or just because he's, he uh, was always nice to me, a great guy. Um, but when this conversation started to foster about the removal of the SROs, um, a lot of people would post on Facebook like why they were for the SROs. And I paid attention to that and I listened to all of them. I have a lot of people on my Facebook, have a lot of people that are for the SROs. And I have a lot of people that are against them, which is whatever, like I like to read both sides. Um, and I saw a lot of stories about the SROs being like really supportive for the students and like in the time of grief or like they would personally know their families and they would look out for them and just do these certain things. And I'm thinking to myself, this is almost sounding like a social work job, right? Like a, like, almost like a, a peer advocate or like some, like someone that they can just go to. And that seems cool and that's great. I think police officers can play that role as well. What I would suggest, um, that police officers get in touch with the social workers at least once a month. I think that's really important. I think they should be able to check in. I think they should be mandated to check in with the social workers. I think there should be a social worker that's um, that has a role of indicating high-risk students, meaning students that may experience DV at home, um, CPS. All of these different factors that we know are very important and very um, unique to adolescent development. Um, I think police should, should be aware of this so that when they see interactions with these students that they can foster positive relationships so that there isn't any negative backlash because if a child is witnessing their mother and father arguing and hitting one another in the morning and then they have to walk to the bus in the cold. And then they see a police officer that they saw last night riding around their house, but didn't stop at their house and their mom was getting beat up. There might be some confusion. There might be some, you know, some tension. And I say that scenario because I know that that happened because I counseled a student that, that went through that. So I think it's really important for the SROs, if they are going to stay into the school, to be connected with the social workers and um, to understand what's going on with the students that they're serving and protecting.
Thank you, Naima. Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Beetle? Uh, Lisa will get to you in a second. Beetle. Here you go.
A, um, I, I do have, um, I am someone who does not think that there should be police officers in schools. Um, and if there are, I think there should be a very stark line of demarcation that there shouldn't be information shared between someone who serves as like a counselor and someone who serves essentially as, you know, a, a soldier, as somebody who's supposed to, I guess, quell any kind of law-breaking or violence. and someone who serves essentially as, you know, a soldier, somebody who's supposed to, I guess, quell any kind of lawbreaking or violence. There's, if I think that if it were known, especially to children, that, you know, there are police officers in school, which they already know, who know what their home life is like, what may be going on to them. Any kind of cooperation between students and administration, counselors, I would not talk to anyone that I thought was going to go running to a cop to tell them anything about me, even if it was supposedly harmless. Plus, there's also the the opportunity for abuse. The more you know about what is happening in someone's life, the more you can exploit that and exploit them. There's just, there should really be no, there should be confidentiality for a reason. I wouldn't expect necessarily like a police officer to share with someone in a school a student's criminal file unless there was some reason, some kind of danger or some kind of like reason for their, you know, mental health, something like that, unless it was a matter of life and death or possibly injury. So there shouldn't be like cross-sharing of that information. There's just, it it seems like a thing that if it was commonly known, and there's really no way it could be kept secret, that's going to start its own set of troubles and it's not going to serve anyone. Like if schools need counselors, they should have counselors. Police officer, those lines shouldn't be blurred. Police officers are not counselors. They're they're not with big brothers and big sisters, or if they are, that's a different set of hours. There are reasons that, you know, that there are social workers and counselors in schools to serve that purpose. And I think that if we need more of those, we get more of those. We don't kind of give cops even more jobs that maybe they don't need to have. It's like, I mean, maybe we should give them a fire hose and like a helmet, and anytime we see smoke, you know, send them out onto the scene. It's like, we're trying to like lessen the amount of things that they do, and perhaps that will shift some of the community perception of, you know, don't ever call police for anything. If there, if it's very clear what police are supposed to do, then we know who to call when. And and again, I think just in terms of what children are going to do, if they think they've been narked on, you're gonna, any kid that is, you know, kind of like, I sort of trust my guidance counselor, whoever, that's all gone. That is all gone. That's, because even if there is confidentiality, they're not going to believe it. They're not going to believe it. If they think they're going to get ratted out for nothing at all, they're not going to. So yeah, that is a problem in and of itself. If things stay the way they are, I don't like that. But if there's even more blurring of that line, that is extremely problematic for so many reasons. It's like I can't even, so yeah, I'm just saying. But if we need more counselors, we should definitely get more of those. Train, you know, like, social workers, caseworkers, psychologists, whoever, and people that have like, you know, confidentiality agreements and training, so.
Thank you. Thank you both. What you have just witnessed is the rich spectrum of opinion that we have on our task force, which frankly, I think makes it the kind of incredible body of people that we have here. We have such a wide range of views and it's wonderful. It's wonderful. I want to make sure, I see your hand, Naima, but I want to make sure that if there's anyone else from the community who hasn't had an opportunity to speak, I want to, I want to give them that opportunity. Well.
I don't see anyone.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Naima.
Like froze or whatever. So yeah, I think I think SROs, if they are going to say in the school that they're serving a unique purpose. I understand the concern of confidentiality, me being a social worker. I understand that completely, and I think social workers, that if there was a social worker that was in this position with social work ethics, that they would be able to navigate. That's one of the things that we do best, right? We understand what information to share and what information not to share. And if SROs again are in the school, they are playing a found, they're they're going to be playing a huge role in that. And I think it's very important for them to have something on their radar. It doesn't necessarily need to be in detail what mom is going through and what dad's going through and things of that sort. But this person is in need, this is a high-risk student. If you do see them, if you see them, that there's an altercation, please be mindful. And the logistics and all that can be worked out if this was ever to happen, but I understand the the concern about the the trust issue with the social worker and the police, if the if the police knows my information and things of that sort. But again, I think social workers are very good at navigating what information to say and what not to say. We're all going to have our opinions, but I already know that police officers in the school, like I said, I was in there last year, and they're mandated reporters as well. So if the safety, any time confidentiality is 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 broken, is if there's a harm of self, harm of others, so if there's a safety need, police officers are automatically, they're they're going to have to know this is a part of their job. So I don't, I understand, like I said, I understand the concern, but I also do think that this would play a huge part in how police officers look at certain students and what they're going through. If you see a rowdy student coming in at late, a police officer automatically might put their power hat on and think, oh, this is like, you need to get to class. But if they understand, oh, this is the student that we just had a meeting about two weeks ago, all right. And they might change their content, hopefully. So I think it's a good, I think it's a good a good way for them to change their conduct or their attitude towards students if they have a little information about them.
Thank you, Naima. We have seven minutes, so I think we have time for Jean and then Pat. So we'll start with Jean.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity.
You're getting feedback.
I know. Good evening. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're still getting feedback, though.
Because I have it on. Just bear with me for one moment.
Okay.
Sorry. I've been waiting for a while, so I apologize.
Tell you what, Jean, we're going to go to Pat and then we'll come back to you.
Okay, thanks a lot, Lester.
Go ahead, Pat.
Hello, check, check. Oh, hi. Yeah, just in terms of like SROs in schools, giving, I, I, yeah, I agree with Beetle in that giving cops the discretion to make choices about whether or not, I feel like just remove, it sounds like Naima, from what you were saying, it's just like, yeah, cops play a sort of a a social worker role, which they should not play. So let's just cut that all out and just get more trained people that, you know, whose job it is to look after our students. And, you know, we have to think about just like the most vulnerable and who would potentially be impacted by a cop making the wrong choice. It's just, just remove any chance of it happening. You know, because there was a time before cops in schools. I had cops in my school, and I didn't pay any attention to it. But if they're playing like some sort of like protective building scenario, then like stay out of the school. Either way, removing, the the less police around students and their development, they're, you know, it's just just better. And yeah, that's, and it sounds like from that petition going around that that is what is desired by a lot of parents, because they understand the the risks and challenges that comes with having, you know, officers who like have, you know, they're who are enacting law at their disposal. So, I don't, that's all.
Excellent. Pat, thank you. Jean, you ready for us? Hold on while we unmute you.
Well, Jean is unmuted. There she goes.
Okay, there you go, Jean.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've been listening for some time, and I thank the guests for bringing forward this valuable information. But I'd like to speak to two issues and I'll be brief. The SROs in the school, do you, have you realized the background behind the need for them? When I was school board president back in 2000, because Governor Pataki, as a result of the the first attack at McCombe, at the Columbine, that was a law that was designed, and I was instrumentally involved in the creation of the Project Save legislation. I'm not sure if your speakers this evening are aware of that. But that law that came into place, there is an emergency response plan and a safety plan required in every school. And the SROs were a part of that law, and it has been updated every year since 2000 to current. I'm not sure if they're aware of that, but I did not hear anyone this evening speak to the fact that where they were born, where did they come into the fray? And I think everyone should realize that it's a law. It's a law that dictates the need in our schools, in New York State. I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but I educate, I offer this information and I would recommend everyone educate themselves. Every parent in the Kingston City School District should be aware of the safety plan that protects their child in that school. That's critically important. And every year, the safety plans are updated in a public hearing. And if there's any addendums or additions, it has to go to the New York State School, the New York State School Board Association in New York State. So I'm just letting the public this evening, if they're listening, I speak on behalf of the SROs. They're there for a reason. They protect not only the children, but the staff, administrators, in a safe, orderly learning environment. As far as one other thing, Lester, I wanted to speak to when Chief Tinty spoke about morale. I worked in corporate America many years, and morale is a key component in the workforce. And I firmly believe that the Kingston KPD does not have enough officers to accomplish their task at hand, especially with the most current issues that we're facing, not only in our city, state, but in our world. So I would support the beat where our police officers are going out now 40 minutes a day. But I also firmly believe that an action plan should have, and a strategic plan should have been recognized before they implemented this to recognize the need for more officers. I've done my research and I've read up on that, and that is a component that other areas have have added to their police forces. So I'm in support of adding more police to the workforce to accomplish this. And we're somewhat asking for Mission Impossible right now. That's how I see it. And many parents in this in this Kingston City School District are for the SROs. I heard Ms. Shapiro mention that many people are are not for it. I I disagree with that statement respectfully. So I think you should become educated, more people on the SRO need in the schools and the law that dictates that, and also look at the amount of police officers that we currently employ and the need for more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We've hit our, we've hit our deadline. Bill, I'm sorry, but I've already extended our our deadline. Please do send me an email. Please do. I want to hear from you. So it's info@peacefulguardiansproject.org. I, your your input is and was tonight extraordinarily important and valuable, and we appreciate it very much. Thank you for allowing us to throw a lot of information at you tonight. But we want you to know that we're taking this quite seriously, and we 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 want your feedback and your insights so that it's baked into what we do. Thank you so much, and I'm going to ask the task force members to stay on just for a couple more minutes. But to the rest of our 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 guests, thank you so much and have a great night. Bye-bye. I won't keep you long, but I just, I wanted to thank you. You guys were terrific.
Yeah, that was good.
Terrific tonight. I don't know where you pulled it from, but you really pulled it amazingly well. And what what I felt as I was listening to you was that it came from your heart. And it didn't matter whether we agreed or disagreed. It was authentic, it was genuine. And I think that's why we didn't get a lot, in my view, a lot of negative pushback, because you you were the advocates, you were the individuals who were standing for really, really important issues tonight, and I want to thank you. Chief, I want to thank you. You were, just by virtue of your position.